Welcome, welcome, welcome to True 360. I am Jennifer Jones, your host Holly Holliday will be joining us shortly. It is the height of the political season, presidential campaigns, legislative and policy issues, voting rights initiatives, things going on all over, not just the country, but for those of us who are heavily involved in legislative matters, there's a lot going on. So, welcome to True 360 today. I am excited because today we are gonna be talking with the Montgomery County Commission for Women and talking about the 2016 Women's Legislative Briefing. We are so excited about today's show. We've had an amazing holiday weekend celebrating the life, the legacy, and the service, passion, and commitment of Dr. Martin Luther King this weekend, and we had a very, a series of special events all over the country. And so today, I'm elated because the event that was near and dear to my heart, two that were most near and dear to my heart, but several that I stopped by all day on Monday, was the Stop the Violence One County, One Voice, Stop the Violence March and Forum hosted by none other than Mayor Eugene Grant and all of the elected leadership on the local, state, and federal level in Prince George's County, Maryland. And so before I bring Mayor Grant into the conversation, I just wanna invite you that if you have comments, please feel free to text us at truth360. In addition, you can text us at truth360bybdc, you can like us on Facebook at truth360bybdc. We'll be reading your comments throughout the show, and of course, you can email us. The email address is truth360@blackdresscollaborative.com. And so I just wanna take a moment to celebrate. I have my sign here from the Stop the Violence Rally where we marched around FedEx Field. I'll try to get some pictures posted over to our wonderful sound engineers. Both Mike and DJ Freeze are here in the studio with us today. We're excited about that. Mayor Grant, can you hear me?
Hello?
Mayor Grant?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. All right, Mayor Grant, Monday was the amazing day that we had hoped for. Hundreds and hundreds of people showed up to join us for the first One County, One Voice, Stop the Violence March and Forum at FedEx Field. It was just amazing. It was cold and chill in the air, but we were on fire in our hearts, and the passion and mission were high. What'd you think of the day and the turnout for the Stop the Violence Rally?
Well, we wanna first of all, thank you, Sister Jennifer, and all of your listening audience for their support and their prayers of this event. It was phenomenal. It was historic to see people from all over Prince George's County, from all different walks of life, to stand in unity together to say that we are going to be one county with one voice saying, "Stop the Violence" in Prince George's County. It was phenomenal.
We had an absolutely wonderful day. I'm going to try for our listeners to give them an idea of what it was like and hope that I can be successful at getting these pictures over to the engineers. It was amazing, Mayor, too. Of all of the things, the energy was high, seeing such a cross-section of law enforcement, the community grassroots, community servants, to see organizations. I mean, everyone was represented in the faith community along with elected leadership. I was excited, Mayor Grant, that an element of the march around FedEx Field that was moving, and I think it most deeply concretized the value of the march and the mission, that this is a year-long mission to educate the community about alternatives to violence, what to do to stop the violence. It was preventative, but every, I think it was about every quarter mile, we stopped and took down a knee for a moment of prayer. What made you make the decision to integrate prayer and such a strong faith message into the day?
Well, as you know, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was also a minister of the gospel, and a part of many of his marches, he would stop and kneel and pray in different sections because he wanted people to stay focused and remain humble and be connected to a force that is greater than themselves, and that would be God, of course. And then by doing that, God would listen to them, he would hear them, and he would heal their life.
It was just absolutely moving to me. I've even enjoyed that we're in the middle of the week now, and just looking at the wonderful Facebook posts, I have done my share of getting the impact of the violence, just those pictures of seeing, you know, hundreds of people gathered together on that mission, and then to see people kneel down. I mean, we had every culture represented, different age groups. My son was with me. I mean, it was a phenomenal, phenomenal effort. So what can our listeners look forward to now that we've had the press conference to let the world know, the entire country is abuzz about what you've done? We've gotten all of the support from Senator Barbara McColsky, Congressman Steny Hoyer, Senator Ben Cardin, Congresswoman Donna Edwards, I mean, the county executive, Rashernelle Baker III, the governor, lieutenant governor, and the state of Maryland. You have had every degree of leadership participating in this. What are the next steps?
Well, the next step is going to be going into the workshops, the seminars, the classes that deals with conflict resolution, that deals with mediation, and that deals with anger management. And so we'll be going month to month to different churches, rec centers, libraries, wherever there's gonna be a family of people who want to be educated on how they can help to stop this violence, we're gonna be doing that. Next month, the big event next month will be the hip-hop community, the go-go community, and the vice. We'll be sitting down, talking to the chief of police, the sheriff, our public safety officials, to talk about how they can work together to reduce and stop violence in our community.
I think it's absolutely awesome. Mayor Grant, how can people follow up with you and connect with you? If they're interested in having the educational materials, participate in volunteering, what can people do?
Well, we're encouraging people to continue to go to our website, pgcsz.org. That stands for Prince George's County, Stop the Violence, dot org. We're asking you to go there to stay informed about what we're doing. They can send us an message, connect with us through an email, we will respond. We are encouraging many people, from all walks of life, to be ambassadors of peace, to be ambassadors of love, to stay, to remain focused, that we are one county, we have one voice, and that voice is to say, "Stop the Violence."
Well, you did an absolutely exceptional job. I wanna celebrate and laud you. I know that you had an army and team of people around you, supporting you in this mission. I wanna celebrate just all of the people who stepped up to the plate to really make this event happen. I have the website up, we're gonna continue to blast it. I look forward to having you on the show between now and the next event, the next large-scale event. I'm excited about the young people that you have connected to this mission. I was excited to see people from all walks of life. Many of us laughed, wondering if we could get up off of our knees, and it was just an absolutely beautiful day. So I'm gonna be shameless, Mayor, and ask you, I have my big beautiful sign, it's been riding with me in the car, "Stop the Violence," and I just wanna know, how can I get a Stop the Violence baseball hat? I'm just saying, okay?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take good care of you. You'll get one.
Absolutely. Well, you know what I really wanna do, let me be shameless. Anytime that we're organizing and serving the community in this fashion, what I really want, Mayor, is for you to produce enough hats, and I wanna buy, I wanna support the STV movement by buying a hat, a baseball cap. And so we're gonna start that rally. If Holly was already in the studio with me, she'd be cheering and saying, "Absolutely." So you and I are gonna make the commitment that I think that every woman, boy, girl, man, in Prince George's County, and dare I say, throughout the country, should have a Stop the Violence hat, and begin to spread a spirit of not only prevention, not only addressing the violence in our homes, in our families, in our communities, in our neighborhoods, but also spread the kindness. The kindness and the love and the prayer and the education are the antithesis of violence. And so I'm just excited about the work that you've done and look forward to continuing this conversation and partnership throughout the year.
We appreciate you, we love you. Thank you so very much for all your years of service, and thank you for being a part of the Stop the Violence movement.
It was my honor. Thank you so much, Mayor Grant. I'll be in touch with you soon.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, bye-bye. Well, that was the voice of Mayor Eugene Grant. We're gonna go to a quick song break so that we can get ready for our guests who are in the studio, the Montgomery County Commission for Women and the 2016 Women's Legislative Briefing. We're gonna have our first song for the day. Our theme in music, of course, is gonna be all about women. And who else to start us off but Whitney Houston's rendition of Shaka Khan's "I'm Every Woman"?
We are so excited today to have from the Montgomery County Commission for Women, from the Office of County Executive Ike Leggett, the executive director of the commission, Jody Finkelstein, who I've had the pleasure over the last year of not only getting to know, but getting to see her in action. And boy, you had some big shoes to fill, and I think we all are applauding all over the region that they couldn't have picked a more adequate, suitable, competent, passionate, and brilliant person to sit in the seat of executive director. Welcome to True 360.
Well, thank you. Did my mom tell you to say all that?
No, she did not. You tell your mom, it is all true.
Thank you so much.
And I've had the pleasure over these years, both from the Maryland Commission for Women and the Montgomery County Commission for Women, to have the Montgomery County's first vice president, is that the correct title? The Montgomery County Commission for Women, this brilliant force, she is the quietest, most intense. What is my joy when Lorna's gonna ask the question? She'll ask the tough question. It is so wonderful, and Lorna and Jody, I wanna make sure I'm not butchering your last name. I wanna say Lorna Ford, but my brain wants to say Lorna Ford Day.
No, no special addition to the last name, just Ford.
Lorna, welcome to True 360. We are so honored and elated to have you. My co-host Holly Holliday just made it into the studio. So I'm just gonna start off this moment and then go to a quick song break so that we can bring her in to the conversation to have both of you share with and tell our listeners who are and what is the Montgomery County Commission for Women?
Well, again, thank you for having us. We're just absolutely thrilled to be here. And what is the Montgomery County Commission for Women? Well, it's very similar to the Prince George's County one, so I'm glad we're sisters working on very important issues, so thank you. We were actually formed in 1972 under legislation to ensure that women had the same rights in our society as men, and it certainly has been transformative for our organization. In the early 70s, as you know, and as sure as many of your listeners know, that was a time when women were really fighting for equal rights, whether it was in the workplace or whatever it happened to be, we're fighting for equal rights. Now, things have certainly changed since the 1970s, but unfortunately, we're still fighting for rights, whether it's for equal pay or equal work, or being able to finally break that glass ceiling, whether it's in engineering or the sciences, or even in elections, women are still struggling and still fighting to be able to have a seat at the table, or to ensure that there's a larger table so more women are at the table.
That's right, that's right. I mean, everyone here knows we are not only shameless advocates for women and shameless advocates for our partners, but that the Commission for Women, the work that we do, not just in Prince George's, but all of us as commissions for women, to highlight issues and engage the elected leadership so that we can be effective, that we do a lot of good work.
That's right. I just have to add, I, as you mentioned, am somewhat new to the position I started.
That's what life is.
Oh, that's great. At least nothing jumped out at us. So when I first started, I wanted to get a little bit to know more about the history of the commission and all of the wonderful women who paved the way before me being there. And I started reading through some of our annual reports, and what was both ironic and disturbing and somewhat funny was that a lot of the issues we were talking about in the 70s, 80s, and 90s are unfortunately some of the very same issues we're talking about today. There was a lot of focus on sexual assault prevention, domestic violence prevention, equity in the workplace, being able to have equal pay for equal work, and of course, issues around affordable childcare. So these are all of the things that have been generational, and I'm glad that we're all together here, not only talking about it, but working on these very important issues.
Collaboratively, because we do that well. Lorna, it's been a pleasure over these years to get to know you, so I invite you to share your commission in Montgomery County, like our commission in Prince George's, and on all levels are made up of diverse sets of women who come to the table with different skillsets, different professions, different disciplines. And so if you could just give us a snapshot of you and your fellow commissioners and then share with us, you know, what you'd like to share, just snapshot like, you know, my commission has communications professionals, business owners, educators, you know, different backgrounds that make up this body so that we're hearing from different cross-sections of the community, young people, senior citizens, so we're kinda getting a great mix. Is your commission structured similarly?
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily structured that way, but we most definitely are representative of a lot of the disciplines, professional disciplines that you would find in the county. And we're very diverse with the ethnicity that we represent on the commission, so it's not intentional, but it's just really a joy that it works out that way because we, like you, have professions ranging from bankers to accountants to people in the healthcare field, to lawyers, past judges, just people, strong advocates, you know, people who make a living just being an advocate in the community. So it really, it's really a great mix of individuals because when we have to discuss the issues that are at hand, there's a lot of different perspectives that help us to make sure that we stay on target and we don't skew a decision to pursue something in any one way because there's a certain mentality. So, you know, it helps us all to just be balanced in our thinking and our approach and how we handle the issues in the county.
So tell us about you and your service, because as you're saying that, I'm thinking, you know what, we can take that song break right after this because there's something that Holly always says, she's a champion for diversity because she talks about how diversity gives you perspectives, and in the end, you come out with a better result, a better solution in all of our consulting work, business strategy work across the board. It's a great thing, having that mix.
Absolutely. Personally, I would consider myself a late bloomer in terms of advocacy, but you know how some late bloomers just hit the ground running and then they're gone, and you're like, wow, where did she come from? And that's just been, since I've been hit with the advocacy bug from the time I was serving with my sorority, I still serve with my sorority.
And which sorority, please?
That's the Montgomery County, Maryland chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And I am the immediate past president, I served there for four years, and that organization in and of itself is all about service to the community and making a difference in the community. So everything, everything that I do outside of the sorority, I mean, it's just an extension of my desire to serve and make a difference for the residents of Montgomery County. So I serve in a number of capacities, not only the Montgomery County Commission for Women, but the Maryland Commission for Women, and the Montgomery County Sister Cities Board, and I can't even think of everything else, but there's a common theme throughout everything that I do, and it's, are you doing anything that's gonna make a difference? Are you improving the lives of those that you're serving? And service is just what we do, and sometimes I wonder, why am I doing this and that and the others? But if I wasn't, I would not feel like I was contributing and making a difference, so...
Because you call it being a late bloomer, but I call it just wisdom because, and what I mean by wisdom is not about age, but just the fact that you're in a position now to leverage what started out as, because you're here, we're both, Holly and I, are members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and we just, it's just what we do. And so when you learn, like I did, I remember my first Women's Legislative Briefing, and that's why I'm so excited to talk about it, that just walking in a room and seeing all of this energy, I had been an advocate for health issues and a number of different issues through the years, but had never seen the organization and structure. So I'm excited to have this conversation. We're gonna take a song break so that I can bring my dynamic co-host. Holly Holliday is in the studio, and I have a theme for women today, so I hope that you like this one. It is one of my favorite, Pump Me Up. She is the quietest, most intense. What is my joy when Lorna's gonna ask the question? She'll ask the tough question. It is so wonderful. And Lorna and Jody, I want to make sure I'm not butchering your last name. I want to say Lorna Ford, but my brain wants to say Lorna Ford Day.
No, no special addition to the last name, just Ford.
Lorna, welcome to Truth 360. We are so honored and elated to have you. My co-host Holly Holiday just made it into the studio.
Great.
So I'm just gonna start off this moment and then go to a quick song break so that we can bring her in to the conversation to have both of you share with and tell our listeners, who are and what is the Montgomery County Commission for Women?
Well, again, thank you for having us. We're just absolutely thrilled to be here. And what is the Montgomery County Commission for Women? Well, it's very similar to the Prince George's County one, so I'm glad we're sisters working on very important issues. So, thank you. We were actually formed in 1972 under legislation to ensure that women had the same rights in our society as men. And it certainly has been transformative for our organization. In the early 70s, as you know, and as sure as many of your listeners know, that was a time when women were really fighting for equal rights, whether it was in the workplace or whatever it happened to be, we're fighting for equal rights. Now, things have certainly changed since the 1970s, but unfortunately, we're still fighting for rights, whether it's for equal pay or equal work, or being able to finally break that glass ceiling, whether it's in engineering, or the sciences, or even in elections. Women are still struggling and still fighting to be able to have a seat at the table, or to ensure that there's a larger table so more women are at the table.
That's right. That's right. I mean, everyone here knows we are not only shameless advocates for women, and shameless advocates for our partners, but that the Commission for Women, the work that we do, not just in Prince George's, but all of us as Commissions for Women, to highlight issues and engage the elected leadership so that we can be effective, that we do a lot of good work.
That's right. I just have to add, I, as you mentioned, am somewhat new to the position I started.
Scared all of us. That's what life is.
Oh, that's great. At least nothing jumped out at us.
Yes.
So, when I first started, I wanted to get a little bit to know more about the history of the Commission and all of the wonderful women who paved the way before me being there. And I started reading through some of our annual reports. And what was both ironic and disturbing and somewhat funny was that a lot of the issues we were talking about in the 70s, 80s, and 90s are unfortunately, some of the very same issues we're talking about today. There was a lot of focus on sexual assault prevention, domestic violence prevention, equity in the workplace, being able to have equal pay for equal work, and of course, issues around affordable childcare. So, these are all of the things that have been generational. And I'm glad that we're all together here, not only talking about it, but working on these very important issues.
Collaboratively, because we do that well. Lorna, it's been a pleasure over these years to get to know you, so I invite you to share your Commission in Montgomery County, like our Commission in Prince George's, and on all levels are made up of diverse sets of women who come to the table with different skillsets, different professions, different disciplines. And so, if you could just give us a snapshot of you and your fellow commissioners, and then share with us, you know, what you'd like to share, just snapshot like, you know, my Commission has communications professionals, business owners, educators, you know, different backgrounds that make up this body, so that we're hearing from different cross-sections of the community, young people, senior citizens. So, we're kind of getting a great mix. Is your Commission structured similarly?
Well, I don't know that it's necessarily structured that way, but we most definitely are representative of a lot of the disciplines, professional disciplines that you would find in the county. And we're very diverse with the ethnicity that we represent on the Commission. So, it's not intentional.
Yes.
But it's just really a joy that it works out that way, because we, like you, have professions ranging from bankers to accountants, to people in the healthcare field, to lawyers, past judges, just people, strong advocates, you know, people who make a living just being an advocate in the community. So, it really, it's really a great mix of individuals, because when we have to discuss the issues that are at hand, there's a lot of different perspectives that help us to make sure that we stay on target, and we don't skew a decision to pursue something in any one way, because there's a certain mentality. So, you know, it helps us all to just be balanced in our thinking and in our approach and how we handle the issues in the county. So...
So, tell us about you and your service, because as you're saying that, I'm thinking, you know what, we can take that song break right after this, because there's something that Holly always says. She's a champion for diversity, because she talks about how diversity gives you perspectives, and in the end, you come out with a better result, a better solution. And all of our consulting work, business strategy work across the board, it's a great thing, having that mix.
Absolutely. Personally, I would consider myself a late bloomer in terms of advocacy. But you know how some late bloomers just hit the ground running, and then they're gone? And you're like, wow, where did she come from? And that's just been, since I've been hit with the advocacy bug from the time I was serving with my sorority, and I still serve with my sorority.
And which sorority, please?
That's the Montgomery County Maryland Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
Beautiful, absolutely.
And I am the immediate past president. I served there for four years. And that organization in and of itself is all about service to the community and making a difference in the community. So, everything that I do outside of the sorority, I mean, it's just an extension of my desire to serve and make a difference for the residents of Montgomery County. So, I serve in a number of capacities, not only the Montgomery County Commission for Women, but the Maryland Commission for Women, and the Montgomery County Sister Cities Board. And I can't even think of everything else, but there's a common theme throughout everything that I do, and it's, are you doing anything that's gonna make a difference? Are you improving the lives of those that you're serving? And service is just what we do. And sometimes I wonder, why am I doing this and that and the others? But if I wasn't, I would not feel like I was contributing and making a difference. So...
Because you call it being a late bloomer, but I call it just wisdom, because, and what I mean by wisdom is not about age, but just the fact that you're in a position now to leverage what started out as, because you're here, we're both, Holly and I are members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and we just, it's just what we do.
Just what we do.
And so, when you learn, like I did, I remember my first Women's Legislative Briefing, and that's why I'm so excited to talk about it, that just walking in a room and seeing all of this energy, I had been an advocate for health issues and a number of different issues through the years, but had never seen the organization and structure. So, I'm excited to have this conversation. We're gonna take a song break so that I can bring my dynamic co-host. Holly Holiday is in the studio, and I have a theme for women today, so I hope that you like this one. It is one of my favorite Pump Me Up in the Morning songs, Katy Perry's Roar.
Oh, goodness.
Woo!
I love that song.
I do too. That's that song.
Oh, my God.
Woo! Hello. Thank you, Jennifer. It's so, it's always exciting to walk into your own house late and have a room full of people. So, this is how dinner parties at my house actually go. So, should you ever get invited, and I usually ask the guests to cook too. So, there you go. But thank you all for being here. I appreciate it so much.
And dynamic and have so much going on, as we all do, you know, up till the minute.
Totally disrespectful to everybody.
So, Holly, how's your day been? We talked to Mayor Grant, called in to talk about the stop the violence, but you know, I'm just on blast.
We're gonna spend absolutely no time on me. We're gonna spend all the time focused on our guests. Y'all will definitely get my update at some point. But you already know to hit me on Twitter, because I usually put it all out there there, and some things you probably don't even need to know about, because I'm an overshare. What can I say? But until then, we're gonna try to get our guests to do a little bit of oversharing, because as you all know, we have, this is a bit, we keep telling y'all, we keep telling y'all how critical this year is. And Jennifer assists us by reinforcing that, by bringing guests to drive that point home. And so, I was just remarking to the ladies off camera that I attended, I used to live in Montgomery County, and I attended the briefing a few times when I lived in Montgomery County. And I found it to be very, very informative, and really helpful also just in terms of outlining, not so much even just the issues, because unfortunately, they kind of stayed the same, but the discreet points that we really need to focus people around, and specifically, the legislative points, which is what I needed some help on. So, you guys, excellent job. So, I know this year is gonna be just
Absolutely.
as informative. So, what are the issues that we're gonna be dealing with?
Well, we have a number of issues that we're going to address. They start with, we have several seminars. If you know the format of the briefing, it usually starts out with an opening ceremony.
Well, I do, but they don't. Tell them.
It usually starts with the opening ceremony, and then after that, we will break out in the afternoon. We will break out into some compelling seminars, two sessions, back-to-back sessions, and then we end with a reception where individuals can come and meet with the legislators and the advocates and presidential representatives of some of the prominent women's organizations in the county. It's a time to meet and greet and fellowship, and maybe talk on a more personal level about some of the issues that they may have heard about during the briefing. But this year, our sessions are going to cover topics such as health and safety for women, women in STEM, women in leadership, advocacy, emerging populations. I'm really excited about them. Some of these topics are similar to what we've done in the past, and we're bringing them back. And some of them are new, and if we're bringing them back, they may have a different flavor to what you may have seen before. So, this briefing, I mean, it's really not going to be the same that you've experienced in years past. The mission is the same. It's all about advocacy and policy and education. But the way that we present it to you is gonna be much, much different. So, a couple of the new seminars that we're sponsoring has to do with emerging populations. As you know, Montgomery County is a very diverse, has a very diverse community. And we got, they have different sets of issues in those various communities. And our County Executive, Isaiah Leggett, is very, very keen on making sure that we address, or always be mindful of the issues that are facing all of the members of our, all the members of our county. So, we have a session called Emerging Populations. And a couple of the new areas that we're going to address in that seminar have to do with women in prison and their re-entry into society.
Oh, re-entry. Beautiful.
And our veterans, because there's, there are some organizations that are working with veterans, but not enough. And we really need to highlight.
To highlight the needs, the needs and resources. And so, let's take a step back, Lorna and Jody, if you don't mind. Like Holly said, for our listeners who've never experienced the briefing, right? Because I think this is the real, so, the event itself, we're posting it, it's gonna be at the University of Maryland. But when you walk into the briefing, into the facility, there are tables lined up against the wall. Tell us about what's happening at all of those tables. This is before you've gotten into the opening, big opening session, because I really want people to know that, you know, sometimes when you think about legislative advocacy, women feel like, oh, I don't want to be involved, politics aren't for me. Yes, it touches your life. So, I want them to really see how moving this event is to be with hundreds of other women on a mission. So, tell me about all those tables.
It's massive chaos. No, just...
That was good, great.
You walk into the front door, and you are really just amazed at the number of people. Last year, we had over 700 attendees, and close to 80 sponsors. And the only way that we could do this, the only way that the Montgomery County Commission for Women could successfully implement such an event is with our community and corporate cosponsors. We couldn't do it otherwise. So, all these people that you're talking about, and these tables, they are tables representing all of the organizations that have decided to co-sponsor with the Montgomery County Commission for Women, because they have like-minded missions, and they want individuals to know that they are a resource in the community for all needs that have to do with women and children and more. So, all around the perimeter of the building, we will have exhibit tables for all of our cosponsors to have information about what it is they do, so that when you leave there, you will...
You're full of, and so, I'm happy to do a roll call.
Very energizing. It's so energizing, and it's electric.
So, your big Emerald sponsor every year, your top sponsor's been Kaiser Permanente.
Yes, thank you, Kaiser.
And thank you, Kaiser. Woo woo, celebrating the money. Holly, it's your woo woo.
I still have that little notebook that you give out.
And their mission, exactly, exactly. And I do, I literally, I really have my notebook.
And AARP is also a very big sponsor. So, both of those organizations are committed to making everyone's lives a better place, both through advocacy, one more through health, and the other one through daily living in a variety of areas for those 55 and above. So, we are so incredibly thankful. Notebooks or not, we're just happy, happy, happy.
Exactly. To have the support, because that gives so much life and credence to the Maryland Commission for Women, National Organization for Women, Montgomery Chapter, and then you have elected leaders who are supporting you, the Department of Commerce. And then I love this list. I'm gonna just tell, go to the website, the Montgomery County Commission for Women website, look up the Women's Legislative Briefing, because everybody's on this list.
You know, it's one of the things where I wish that I could thank everybody, but I would be afraid that I'd be leaving somebody out. So, anybody who has been involved in the Commission, not only this year, but in the 35 years, and this is our 36 year that we've been doing it, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I think maybe next year, we might want to print up t-shirts that just say, "Thank you," so that way, we can save our voices for advocating on all of these issues.
Exactly, because it's just so beautiful that, you know, a lot of the women have shared how, in the beginning, this did not exist.
That's right.
And so, the women came together from throughout the state, and it's still happening, that there are women coming from the eastern shore and all over to convene, because this was unheard of. And even today, it's still new to so many women.
Right. I would say if advocacy was a sport, this would be the World Series of advocacy.
I agree, I agree.
I think it's just because of the number of sponsors, the number of people, the number of elected officials, and just the number of people that care to come out, usually on a very snowy, hopefully not too snowy, on the 31st of January.
We're crossing our fingers.
We're gonna get out of the way for you.
Get it out of the way.
Yeah, that's what I said. So, no, it's absolutely fantastic, and I'm really honored to be a part of it. I had participated for years and years and years, as all of you. So, I'm really honored to be working with all of you, and also with Mercy Wolf, who has done a phenomenal job of coordinating everything. So, I would like to shout out Mercy. Thank you so much for all your help.
I owe you some document today. They're like, get it in a week, a week away. But it's fabulous. And so, then you walk into the room, and there are hundreds of chairs. Feel people have already started claiming their sections, sitting together by groups, and there's all of this energy focused on center stage. So, what's gonna happen? I know the secrets. Both county executives from Montgomery County and Prince George's County are there, which is an honor for Prince George's County to continue to be involved. What else is gonna happen in the plenary session?
Well, we're introducing a different format this year. Typically, we have the, we have the elected officials that bring greetings, and then we go into a keynote speaker before we break out to our sessions. Well, this year, we're not going to have a keynote speaker. We are going to have limited greetings brought by the two individuals you just mentioned. And then, we're going to have a panel discussion with our congressional delegation, and they are going to be discussing issues that are of importance to women and girls. So, it's just gonna be an opportunity to have a conversation, have a conversation with these individuals, and so they can hear what our concerns are, and we can hear what their perspective is on the concerns that we have. So, we think it's going to be, well, we don't think, we know, because we're already claiming that it's going to be a wonderful opportunity to have a conversation.
Absolutely. Because for so many women, like those of us who are in advocacy and in the political arena, we kind of take for granted that we see these people all the time and engage them. But for so many women, this is their one chance a year to hear what their senator, what their congressperson, what a council member is saying, and to get that touchy feel up close and personal, because, I mean, there've been conversations had in that room that have set the course for liberals led better. I mean, we had been championing equal pay, and for President Obama to be elected, and the first thing he did, it was for all of us, like, we've been...
I have to say, there have been numerous times where I have been in the back of that room, talking to my colleagues and to elected officials, sort of quietly in the corner, trying to figure out strategy for different bills. And so, I think that that's fantastic. It's a wonderful opportunity. And as grateful as I am to have all of those elected officials there, I'm also as grateful to have so many advocates there, because to be able to share ideas, lessons learned, helps the next generation of individuals who will also be there, work with us, so that way, at some point, they can take the reins and help continue to make the changes that we've made.
Oh, I think it's fabulous. And I'm particularly always fascinated, as you all mentioned at the top of the show, when I was standing off camera, about how you also bring together diversity of the room. And I love the fact that you're doing the pan. I'm very excited about that, because it really gives congressional members, I mean, this room is special. These are like focus groups for free.
Yep. Absolutely. I'm gonna write that down, Holly. Let me tweet that.
You know, I really trust that it will be a really fruitful conversation, and given the history of this conference. But it was really a treat for the congressional members to be a part of the room, to hear firsthand what happens. And as you all have done, both at the State House and dealing with Congress, you know, it's fascinating to me how impactful those stories can be. And so, I'm interested in what happens the rest of the day, because I know so much of it is about hearing the stories of women in the room, and how that, how the issues really impact their lives. I mean, you all have always done such a fabulous job of creating that nexus.
So, I'm sorry.
I want to hear about the issues that you're gonna be discussing.
Oh, some of the issues. We're going to be talking about healthcare and senior women. The, we have panelists that are from the Alzheimer's Association.
So important.
And AARP. You know, it seems to me, and my own, my father passed last year, a couple of weeks ago, last year. So, it's just been a year from Alzheimer's. And, I mean, it's a dreadful and devastating disease that impacts everybody in the family. And unfortunately, you're hearing more and more of incidents where people's loved ones are dealing with this. So, as a result, it means that there are more and more advocates for Alzheimer's Association, and there's more, more information, or more impetus put on what can we do to improve the lives, to further the research.
The baby boomers are getting older, and those of us who are taking care of them, you know, it's become very, it's become a big deal.
Right. And it is. Caring for the caregiver.
Caring for the caregiver is really what the heading of that seminar, because that's
what it's all about. We have a lot of, lot of folk my age who are caring for parents, and, you know, it's, they really need to know what their sources are in the community.
That was part of it, and I was late, actually, on the phone, dealing with someone who's caring for an elderly parent. And I was just like, I'm trying to figure this out. I'm like, oh, I don't, you know, so it's good. That's good.
And then this year, we have a panel discussing STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. And we have, we have identified panelists who represent each aspect of STEM. And we're really excited about that, because we really need to, we want to engage our young girls. We want to get them interested in STEM fields earlier, in elementary school age, you know, so that when they get to college, everyone thinks that, oh, that's just a field for young men. But we want our young girls to know that this is a field for them, just like any other field.
Exactly. I was just in a room on Sunday, on Monday, talking to my last MLK event for the day, and saying, you know, I got so used to being in these rooms, I'm a scientist, being in these rooms, cancer research... cancer research, top of the hill, and I'm usually the youngest person, the only or one of a few women, and sometimes the only or one of a few women of color. And so, I just got used to it and that's why I think I'm so comfortable in my skin, because you just got used to it. So, it's so exciting to me, thirty years later, to see how much energy is being put into, because we can perform and do exceptionally well in all of the STEM and STEAM disciplines.
That's right.
And so, to continue to support that is awesome, right?
Yeah, and one of the things that we're asking the panelists in the STEM seminar is, what, to answer this question, is what policies or what legislation could help more individuals or young ladies participate in these fields and what would have helped them earlier on? And so, that's where we're tying it back to legislation and to policy, because a lot of policy and legislation stems from the workplace, like Lilly Ledbetter. So, not all of it comes from Annapolis, a lot of it comes from women who are in their workplaces, dealing with daily, right, exactly, exactly, exactly.
But it's true, it's just incredible.
The other thing that has always impressed me is that your emphasis on leadership. So, will there be any leadership activities happening?
We have a seminar on women in leadership. Actually, and this is one of those seminars that we've always had, but this year, there's just a different flavor to it.
It's a new twist happening.
New twist. We have invited several individuals that would be considered pioneers in their field. And Jody has a list for me, if she can help me out.
So, well, I, so, there's quite a few, but I'm just gonna name drop for a second.
Sure.
So, we've got two fantastic, many fantastic women, but two that come to mind. The first one is Sally Botsey, who I believe is now retired, but she was the first NSA representative to the Situation Room in the White House, and also the first female to be able to do that. So, I am just so excited to be able to do that. And I have to tell you, she had come to some of our planning meetings and after she left, one of the other members said, "Do you know who that was?" And I said, "Someone that was really nice to spend her time here helping us plan." She's like, "Well, yes, of course, that's true, but let me tell you a little bit about her background." So, she picked up her computer, she researched her and she showed everybody in her room her extensive history. And I was floored. So, I'm really excited to be able to spend some more time with her, right, and to learn from her experiences.
And that's what I'm saying, that's what's so powerful, that you have such a mix of like grassroots, those of us who are new, and you have the opportunity to have her pour one pearl of wisdom into why you should run for office.
I'm hoping for a whole nap of this that we have.
Yeah, say, yeah, yeah, say.
Love pearls, not to pity, I'm gonna say.
I was leaving room for everybody, but I said, I'm gonna wear multiple chains of pearls, so I'll go with that.
So, the other person I'm also very excited about, because I also happen to be a sports enthusiast, is Perry Barber, who is a professional baseball umpire, is gonna be sitting right next to Sally. So, I just, I cannot, I cannot wait. And I was just so thrilled that she's gonna be joining us, coming from New York. So, I'm absolutely thrilled. And she said she's gonna have a lot of great stories about some of the games that she's umpired. And she also mentioned she's just gonna talk about her relationship with Earl Seaver. So, I'm very excited about that, too.
That is gonna be exciting. That crosses all dynamics, and I love that, too.
Yeah, it's a wonderful opportunity for, because the age range of attendees at our seminars is wide.
It is.
I mean, we have a separate program for the youth, but then we have young adults and, you know, those that are in the middle and then those that are much more seasoned. But it's still a wonderful opportunity for ladies to see that the glass ceilings have been broken, can be broken. And it's just not, it's just not understood that you can't do certain things. You can do whatever you put your mind to.
One of my favorite quotes is, "You can be what you can see." So, when you have people out there that are scientists or in the Situation Room or umpires, a young lady can look at that and go, "Wow, she can do it. I wonder when I'm gonna be able to do that."
Exactly. Did we get all the issues? Because that's the most important.
No, we have some more.
Okay, well, let's make sure we get the issues out there.
We have another seminar called Advocacy. This is a new seminar. And what we want to do is bring individuals that can share their lessons learned for some top advocacy campaigns. And so, we're going to have the Maryland Gambling Initiative. We're gonna have folks talk about that.
That's a good one. Exactly, because it's a big deal. I mean, we have Live, we have Baltimore, then we have the Big MGM coming online. And so, it's really a great, great foresight.
And then someone that's gonna be talking about their campaign to start school later. So, we just want individuals, we want everyone to leave with information that they didn't have when they came in. And if you wanna be an advocate, if you've never thought about being an advocate, but now you think you want to, we want to give you something that you can work with, some lessons learned, some pitfalls, some, you know, I've already done that, don't do it that way.
Yes, yes, yes.
Something that will help you in your, on your track to advocate for whatever issue it is that you're trying to advocate for. So, yeah, we've done that and we did, and we have Economic Justice and Opportunity, you know, that covers the gamut of all of the women's, it pays sick leave, all of the domestic violence, all of those issues would fall under that seminar, so.
And it's brilliant that you put them, because it's something that we always say, Holly coined the term, that we like to see victims go from being victims to survivors to leaders, right? And leaders to be able to stand up, make your voice heard through advocacy. And I always tell people, as much as we wanna help the most egregious crimes, sexual assault, domestic violence, human trafficking, that if you can't give a person solid financial footing and solid, really solid housing, and good health services, all of your work, it's not in vain, but it could just be so much better. And so, for you to have it under that, you know, justice and making sure you're dealing with the economic component, because that's how you prevention are stopping.
See, I think that's a good topic for another show, economic justice for sexual and domestic violence.
Well, I'm feeling it, I'm loving it, because Jody, you know how to believe, you ready for it. I can tell you, on February third, now, now, you look, you are having open doors. As Holly and I often say, on February third, Judge Charette is going to be here to kick off the Family Justice Center Foundation for Prince George's County. So, we're finally getting one. So, Jody, I will keep you on, it's gonna be an ongoing thing to make sure that we raise funds. So, that's why, that's what I'm saying. And so, to, this is what our collaboration is about. It's this relationship that kept us going. I mean, we've been for nine years. And so, County Executive Baker made a commitment to us on the campaign trail and he has been faithful to that. So, again, it's the energy of these things. It really is.
I agree, I agree. Have recovered it all, because I'm overwhelmed.
But excited, but excited.
There's more, there's more.
Yes, there's more. We're also gonna have a documentary.
That's what I was gonna say, talk about the documentary.
We're gonna have a documentary that actually came out around this time last year. It's called A Path Appears. It's based on a book by Nicholas Kristof. And it's a three-part documentary, but we are only going to share the segment that addresses human trafficking. So, we're gonna have our own Montgomery County Commissioner Bobby Mintz is the chair of the Montgomery County Human Trafficking Task Force. So, she is gonna serve as a moderator for that session. So, we're gonna watch that segment of the documentary and then have a discussion.
That's an awesome conversation, because it's, again, it is, I attribute the Women's Legislative Briefing in Montgomery County to not only helping me find a beautiful focus space in the Prince George's Commission, but our collaborations, I mean, we were at Human Trafficking Conference just a few months ago. I mean, it's all of this, all of this work that we do, but it really starts with you getting in these workshops. And that's what we all live for, that, you know, the We Three Conference happened because County Executive Baker was there, did the welcome, his first term in office. And he had been there as a delegate before in the seats, but this time, and he looked out over the women and said, "Can we do something to give the women in Prince George's?" Because, and that's something, we can, We Three. And so, it's been wonderful to build what I now call kind of a triad relationship, that the Maryland Legislative Agenda for Women is functioning, getting the legislative advocacy, the bills that are actually gonna be fought for in Annapolis, which gives us support on the local level. And then this Women's Legislative Briefing to educate us and really empower us about the details. Those breakout sessions, I tell women, you gotta go just to sit in the sessions and see this focused energy, the way you have a panel of experts there to engage in detail and intimately. And then next, this We Three Conference that is just empowerment, saying, "You can lead, you can advocate." And together, I think we're meeting or bridging a need, I know, for Prince George's County. It is phenomenal that the women are so connected to this briefing. It's just, it's wonderful to see.
Well, we are at the top of the hour and we're gonna take a brief song break. And when we come back, I can't wait to hear about the Youth Track.
Good, because I'm gonna say, we can't finish until we talk about the Youth.
Exactly, that's what I was gonna say. And I wanted the young people to be at the top of the hour. And Holly, I've been trying to have a theme, you know, I love all genres of music and it could be hip-hop and rock and scripture, but today, it's all about women. And I hope that I'm saying her name, Janelle Monae, her wonderful song, "Queen." And so, if you haven't seen the video, look it up on YouTube.
It's hard to stop rebels that time travel. But we at the Time Council pride ourselves on doing just that. Welcome to the Living Museum, where legendary rebels from throughout history have been frozen in suspended animation. Here in this particular exhibit, you'll find members of Wonderland and their notorious leader, Janelle Monae, along with her dangerous accomplice, Badulla Oblongata. Together, they launched Project Queen, a musical weapons program in the twenty-first century. Researchers are still deciphering the nature of this program and hunting the various freedom movements that Wonderland disguised as songs, emotion pictures, and works of art.
Yeah. Yeah, let's flip it. I don't think they understand what I'm trying to say.
All right, and we are back. And I know, although you were bopping your head to Janelle Monae, you were waiting with bated breath for us to return. Because, like me, you've been waiting to hear what is going on with the Youth Track. So, we're gonna start right at the top with that. And we even have one of the youth representatives on the phone.
Hi, it's Jennifer. Is this you, Anita Sherry?
Yes, it is.
We are so excited to have young people.
Very excited to have you.
Welcome to Truth 360, Anita. We are going to just talk about all that's gonna happen with the young people. We're gonna let Lorna share with us. And then, we want you to tell us about who this young woman is that's the youth representative on the Women's Legislative Briefing Planning Committee.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Alrighty, well, we are very excited about the Youth Track. This is our third year. It started out as, we called it Teen Tween Session. And it actually was the birth child of our, she was then the first Vice President and she's now our current president, Dr. Deborah Bright Harris. She has a daughter, young daughter, and she was like, "Oh, I need, we need something to engage our young girls." And we hadn't really thought about that before. So, we changed the format three years ago and we introduced the Teen Tween Track, focused on topics that the young people could relate to.
Okay.
And then this year, it was wildly successful. We were just praying that we could get a few people so we wouldn't embarrass ourselves. And it was, I mean, we were at full capacity.
It was fabulous.
And their feedback, you know, they paid attention. I was so surprised, but they paid attention. They gave us, they gave constructive evaluation points. And, I mean, they just really enjoyed it and it was beneficial to them. So, anytime the young people listen, we just love it. So, anyway, this year, doing the same type of thing, but we're calling it The Emerging Leaders. Because we heard this teen term was just not working.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, so, we changed the name. It's called Emerging Leaders, because that's what they are. We're trying to develop them to be emerging leaders. And we're going, this year, we're gonna have two seminars, well, two facets of this seminar for the young people. And by the way, it's for grade seven through twelve.
Okay.
And the first seminar is gonna be Legislation, no, the Legislative Process 101.
Okay.
So, it just talks about how bills are introduced and how they go through the process of becoming law and that, all of that will be discussed. They'll have an entire session for that. And we've got some wonderful panelists.
It's our version of Schoolhouse Rock.
I love it.
Yeah.
I love it.
We've got some wonderful panelists that will be helping the young people understand that whole process. And then, we have the second part of that. And then we have the second part of that is making a difference in your community. And they're just gonna be taught, um, on, on the young people's level about advocacy in their community. Because there are so many things that they can do. And there was a young man that, um, what did he do? He, he...
He's a student from Wheaton High School?
One of the food trucks, right?
Ah.
They, they were advocating for food trucks at their high school.
Oh.
And he was successful. And, and he's gonna be one of the panelists. And so it's just gonna talk to them about, um, identifying issues in their community that concern them.
Yeah.
And then what they can do and, and helping them to understand, okay, here's a roadmap of, of the kinds of things that you would do to advocate for the issues.
It's gonna be a how-to so you can, so you can do.
A how-to so you can do. I love it. So Anita, what are you most looking forward to at the Legislative Briefing? Anita, you still with us?
She's busy advocating.
Anita, me?
Yes, you. Welcome. I was asking, what are you most looking forward to at the conference?
Um, the upcoming one, this Saturday?
Yep, the one on Saturday.
On Sunday.
On Sunday. Sunday, the thirty-first.
On the, the Women's Legislative Briefing, yes, yes, next week. And she's thinking Saturday, Holly, because right Anita, next week, on Saturday, some of us are gonna be checking into the hotel so that we are all close by just in case there's snow or any kind of delay. So that we are all close by for the briefing on Sunday. Exactly, exactly.
All right, Anita. So tell us, what are you looking forward to as part of this conference?
Well, last year was my first year and it was absolutely a success. And I had, I enjoyed it a lot last year. I was not expecting it to be like that.
Ooh, that's a good thing.
It was like above my expectations. Because last year, when I was going, I was like, oh, this is just so boring. And so everything, I was a little hesitant. Just to surprise, I said, no, just enjoy it. And I went in, I absolutely enjoyed it. So, I mean, the upcoming one, I just hope that like, I will see a lot of youth groups there and they're all just trained to participate and out and put their voices out there and show what's this. Because I think it's also good to teach our daughters, our sisters, like all babies about women legislation and how to be a great leader. Because women are leaders.
Amen.
Yes, we're all with you, Anita.
So I love, so your expectation this year is, is big difference. So kudos to you all for creating the new expectation. Um, so what did you learn from last year that you would share with folks?
Well, I'm sure I was in the background, um, watching and we get to like, um, talk about how to change our community, what to do, how to help one another. And we came up with some really great ideas and we worked together in groups and presented. And which was actually really fun for me. Cause like, the fact that a lot of teammates like my age group wanted to work together as groups. And we came up with these great ideas about helping social media and all that stuff. It was really, really, really something like amazing and something to come forward to.
I love that. That is awesome. I am so impressed with you.
Uh, Anita, uh, this is Jennifer, and I'm excited that you are the youth representative for the Women's Legislative Briefing this year. What has your experience been like engaging, um, the women leaders and, and to be able to help them design this year's event?
Okay. Well, I feel like, I, I feel like everyone, wherever they live, they have something that they not like about that place. And I feel like you feel like something about a certain place you should get up and stand for. And in order to do that, you have to gather people around you and talk about it. And sometimes like, you have a lot to say and you will possess so much energy. I think it's better that we put energy into a good work instead of confuse it and end up disappointing everyone else.
That's fabulous. So tell us, um, you are now have an open mic talking to all the youth in the county and across the state and really across the world. What do you want them to know to get them to join you at the Legislative Conference next week?
Well, first of all, that sounds scary and talk to the world.
Yes, you are.
You've been doing it so far, so you're doing a great job.
Well, I hope they can get my act back, you know?
We love you. You sound like nothing but life and energy to us here in the studio, Anita. So you just share, what do you want your peers to know all over the region and country?
Well, first of all, I think it's really good that, like, the youth is coming together and like, output their voices. I'm sorry, I'm shaking.
Take a deep breath.
Yeah, sounds good. So just relax. You are fabulous.
We had no idea. We had no idea.
You're just talking to girlfriends. That's it. Hakuna Matata.
Yeah. But like, it's, um, the women, um, the women's version of legislation, it's a really, 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 really great idea. Like, encourage just, you know, such as women and young women to like become a leader and how to be passionate about whatever they want to do or whatever they want to be. Which is something we should encourage our youth, uh, to never give up if they want to be a doctor or lawyer or anything. And I feel like, if you're ready for anything, as long as it's the right thing, you can for it, you go for it. If you wanna be a leader, go for it. Do whatever it takes, as long as it's good, not in a bad way.
Yes.
You're good, you, um, it's fine. So if you're out there, like, if you wanna become a rapper, a singer, or anything, whatever your dream is, just be motivated and dedicated to it and just focus. And just know that bullying is also a big part of it. Like, if you don't go to school, you don't learn, you can't know the world like that. And you have to know how to work with people and have to appreciate life, appreciate those things around you. If you know like ninety-nine percent of things around you may get on your lasser, it's okay, it's life.
Yes.
I love it. Good job.
Go for it and just work hard. Like, just remember that we are tomorrow's leaders. And if we don't start now, when are we gonna start?
Amen.
Awesome.
Good job.
Yes, Anita.
Well, I have news for you, Anita. Your leadership started today.
Yes.
Uh, we just need to make sure that you have lots of opportunity to exercise that leadership. And I wanna thank you so much for being a part of the show. I cannot think of anything more eloquent to lead us into our next song break really quickly. Um, but I just wanna thank you for being a part of the show and for doing such an excellent job. And I know that all of the youth that he, that heard that were as inspired as we were. So thank you so much, Anita.
Thank you, Anita. You are fabulous. And I, and, and I think I picked a perfect song. We're gonna hear from Destiny's Child Independent Women. Those pictures of the Women's Legislative Briefing that's gonna be happening, we have had a fabulous show. Thank you so much for joining us. This first time, it will not be the last. This is our forum. I will love it. February third, be here, Jody. You're all in, Holly, right? In your house for dinner.
She'll be late though. She'll be late.
No, we gotta go cook before.
And you gotta bring the food with you. But Jennifer's got that part covered, so you're good.
Got it covered. So welcome back to our listeners. We hope that you have, um, enjoyed today's show and that you are ready for the January thirty-first, twenty sixteen Women's Legislative Briefing. The briefing is going to be held this year, as it is every year, at the University of Maryland Shady Grove Campus in Rockville, Maryland. And the briefing, you can still register online. If you just Google, I'm gonna let the ladies do their thing. How can people register for the event, for the conference? I always say just Google Montgomery County Women's Legislative Briefing. It'll pop up. It's there. You've already gotten it in our bonus content. We've sent the flyer out. Uh, we can show that again. But I just want you ladies to, um, spend these last moments wrapping up and sharing, uh, with everyone exactly what you, uh, want them to know about the Women's Legislative Briefing.
So as we've been talking about women and, and women leaders, I, I have to share, one of my favorite, um, female leaders is Eleanor Roosevelt. And one of them, she's had numerous fantastic quotes, but one of my favorite quotes from her is, "You must do the thing you think you cannot do." And so many women don't think that they can make a difference. Many young people don't think that they can be leaders. So in the words of Eleanor Roosevelt, "You must do the thing you think you cannot do." Sign up for this event, learn how to advocate, learn to use your voice in, uh, an exceptionally powerful and helpful way to help your, not only yourself, but the community.
That is awesome. That is awesome.
And I ditto everything that Jody just said. Our theme this year is pioneering justice for women and girls through policy, education, uh, advocacy, and legislation. Legislation, educ- education, advocacy, and policy. If I, if I think a leap, then I can remember all of the elements. But, but it's the things that we do all the time. And, and that's our theme. And we're trying to make a difference for women and girls. And we're trying to engage them and, and, and get them to, to know that they too can be advocates for issues. You don't have to just sit down in the, in the corner somewhere and just let things happen to you, no.
That's the most important part because you're not only advocating for them, you're teaching them to advocate for themselves.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So you can do it. You can do it. There are a lot of women out here doing it. Don't be afraid. Um, get out, out of your comfort zone. Just, just step up and do it.
And I can tell you, last year, I missed the Women's Legislative Briefing. I was on business travel for the first time in almost ten years. I missed the briefing. And I can tell you throughout the legislative session, I felt a little lost. And, uh, so this year, I'm like, no, I blocked it off to make sure. I, it was an unavoidable, um, business meeting that I had to travel to. And I tried to fly back. There was ice, the plane, I just nightmare. And so we got in the car, tried to push it from North Carolina, didn't happen. And so I'm excited to be there this year. I just wanna highlight while you're with us, uh, just a couple of other major events that we are all a part of. And one, uh, of them is the Maryland Legislative Agenda for Women. It's going to be having its annual briefing and reception. And so many of the women who are part of the Women's Legislative Briefing also do their boots-on-the-ground work through the Maryland Legislative Agenda for Women. And their reception is gonna be on February sixteenth. There's usually information in your packet at the briefing, preparing for the re- reception and legislative session. And then another ag- um, event is the Maryland Coalition Against Sexual Assault, Lisa Jordan's reception. It's tomorrow night in Annapolis, Mary. Tickets are still available, sixty dollars. Lisa was here, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, yeah. And, uh, to talk about, uh, sexual assault, about her bills and legislation. Um, and so I hope that we can make this an annual affair. It means so much to the listeners, um, that are hearing both the newbies and for those of us who are waiting for the briefing and updating. So we always pub up the Legislative Briefing. But this year, I'm elated. I mean, heart moved. And, um, and...
And we're glad you can be there.
Yes, I'm gonna be there. I was like, no, no, can't do it. They moved the whole meeting to February because I complained so much. And so in a good way, I was advocating for...
You were being a leader.
Exactly, being a leader, standing up. And so, um, so there's so much that we're gonna do. Uh, we'll talk about some of the other women's events that are happening. The National Coalition for Black Civic Participation is having its annual conference, um, on March seventeenth through the nineteenth.
Through the nineteenth, Healthy, Wealthy, Wise. And, uh, we are having, I'm not even gonna share the surprises yet cause we'll probably do a whole show, uh, with the surprises and with this year's coordinator, Dr. Kwame Anderson.
Yes.
Uh, so it's, that's definitely, um, the, the tickets are already available. Uh, it is a political year. I will give you a small hint. So the tickets are going fast. And you do not want to not be in the building. Because, uh, being in the building is where all the action.
The action.
It's gonna happen, exactly.
And then, um, in March this year, we're having early on the sixteenth, Prince George's County Annual Women's History Month Luncheon that has a Gladys Noon Spelman Award that celebrates a woman in government in Prince George's County. And then, uh, the last thing is the Maryland Commission for Women, host in partnership with the Maryland Women's History Museum, the Annual Maryland Women's Hall of Fame. And so if, we're gonna send this out on Twitter, uh, uh, on Facebook and email. I already have the list. Go write it in.
On, uh, this weekend.
Yes.
With the snow, who knows? But sign up anyway so you can get the snow alerts. If you are looking for employment, we talked about the family. MGM, uh, at National Harbor is having their huge job fair, folks. Thirty-five hundred jobs. And I'm doing a special call to Prince George's County residents, especially if you live in my neighborhood and you ain't got a job, you need to be there.
And for the entire DMV.
Entire DMV, yep. Them too, absolutely. Uh, so you just go to mgmnationalharbor.com and click on the jobs link. You do have to register. So don't think you can just show up, folks. You got to register. Uh, but they will be interviewing and it is literally everything from unskilled to skilled to professional. So wherever you fall, MGM got a job for you somewhere. So if you don't have one now, or you need a better one, I expect you to be in the building.
And so, uh, we're gonna wrap up before this song break, just to give a great thanks again to you, Lorna, First Vice President of the Maryland, I'm sorry, of the Montgomery County Commission for Women. Also a member of the Maryland, uh, Commission for Women. And to the Executive Director, Jody, you have just been doing an amazing job. And to the Executive Director, Jody, you have just been doing an amazing job. And we are just excited to be just deepening our relationship and partnership. I am excited about the Women's Legislative Briefing on January 31st. If I can ask our engineers to just loop those pictures of the last year's briefing just so that women could get a snapshot. I think that's the reception at the end. Those are the panels. The food is excellent. And just the sponsors that are all just on everybody. And that's the tables just everywhere, all over. So, just be there. If you're not at the Women's Legislative Briefing on Sunday, January 31st, you are missing an opportunity to learn how to advocate. And so, we started the show, Holly, because I know Wednesdays are tumultuous for you so we can have a little time for news that we can use. And the matter that we're gonna discuss after the next song break is all of the legislative advocacy that's necessary in Flint, Michigan.
Yes, and I've been on the phone with Flint all day today.
Been on the phone for a month. So, we're just excited to see how it is individuals. And in Flint, the mayor of Flint is a woman. And they have been standing up, making sure that this travesty and this poisoning of 100,000 citizens through change to save $88 million in the budget. 100,000 people have been exposed to lead for months. And so, what we're excited about now is that it's no longer a secret. It's no longer decided. But the advocates, the faith-based community and the community stood up and spoke up for themselves. And that's what the Women's Legislative Briefing is all about. So, our next song break here is going to be Raheem Devan's song where he just lauds and lifts up amazing woman. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's official right now. In four minutes or less. We gonna crown all of them right now. My mama, your mama. Your babies, mamas, mamas, mamas. This is dedicated to you. Wifey. If you near a woman right now, wherever you at, just turn to him, say. You are appreciated. This is dedicated to you.
I appreciate your smile. And the night much you take to carry and birth a child. Thank you. And the way you play dumb, even when we living real fast. Ooh, thank you. And even at a single parent mama, you still hold it down somehow. Make them lose me somehow. I appreciate your strength. Thank you. Never bite your lip, you say what's on your mind. Thank you. A lady in the street and a freak when it's bad room time. Thank you. Go ride with me, roll with me, tell me what's yours is mine. Hey, fellas. If you ain't got one, better search the world and find it. Woman, woman, woman strong. Woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman, woman special. Woman, woman, woman beautiful. Ain't nothing better than. Woman, woman, woman. Nothing better than. Oh, woman. Better find you a. Woman, special. Woman, woman, woman. I appreciate your glow. Thank you. And when you get angry with us, the way that you let us know. Thank you. And I think it's so cute when you get so emotional. Thank you. You know, till you prove your point, you just can't let it go. But I like that though. I appreciate so much. Thank you. Yeah. Like the I love you feeling, girl, when we touch. Yeah. Like, there's no you, no me, and there's no one. Thank you. Ooh. And if she ever hears it, her to see, she'll come in a rush. Thank you. Yeah. To the rescue, man, you better find you a. Woman, woman. Get you a woman strong. Woman, woman, woman. Ain't nothing like making love. Woman, woman, woman special. Special woman. Woman, beautiful. Woman, woman, woman strong. When I get weak, I need a strong. Woman, woman, woman special. Love it, woman. Woman's got me. Street smart and educated. Got a good head on the shoulder. Sexy swagger with sex appeal. A grown woman hook up them home-cooked meals. A grown woman who's who's confident. Better recognize one when a grown one sip. And a grown woman knows how to tell you no. A grown woman knows when to let you go. You can have a big ol' car and a big ol' house, but next to God, nothing else a monster. Woman, woman, woman strong. Woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman. You better find you a. Special woman, woman, woman. Beautiful. Ain't nothing like it. Woman, strong. Woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman, woman. Special woman. Mercy. Ain't nothing like her. Woman, woman, woman strong. Woman, woman. Gotta think alone. Woman, woman. Hey. When I think about my mom, I think about her. Woman, woman, woman strong. Even got to take my baby mom for raising my gun man. Hey, please. Pimp, nah. Ain't nothing like her. Woman, woman, woman strong. Woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman, woman. Special woman, woman, woman. Beautiful. Woman, woman, woman strong. Woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman, woman. Special woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman, woman. Strong. Woman, woman, woman. Oh, woman, woman, woman. Special woman, woman, woman. Beautiful. Woman, woman, woman. Strong.
All right, we are back. And boy, we just have so much to talk about. We might need four more hours.
Absolutely.
But we're gonna try to get it done in about.
We're gonna get it done. We're gonna get it.
Less than 20 minutes.
Let's do Stop the Violence sign. Because Mayor Grant called.
I have to talk about the Stop the Violence.
Stop the Violence happened.
First of all.
Let me hold up behind you for you.
Let me do the Stop the Violence. Because this is all that we getting.
That's it.
From me on this. Now, look, I don't want no violence. I wanted to be clear that I support. Look here. Evidence. Stop the Violence. I'm all about that life right here. Except, except when it's 19 degrees outside. Then I'm at home in the bed. Now, I have to give a huge, and Jennifer, this is why you a better person than me.
Oh, stop. Don't even say, don't even say.
Hold up, hold up.
Say the word.
Everybody already knows I'm trifling. I'm the trifling one. And we all have our roles to play. And you are the true advocate. Because we sat here on this show. We had Mayor Grant, come on, talk about Stop the Violence. Okay? We was like, we down for the cause.
We coming.
I was like them people that say they marched with King. They was in Europe some damn way. That's me. They say, was you at the march? No. But this is what I can say. Social media helped me to participate in the march. From the covers. Because I was like, ain't nobody marching today. Because it was 19 frickin' degrees with a wind chill factor of five. Five.
Yes.
I said, mm-mm, that's not for me. And sure enough, you know, this is how you know this is real. This is how you know we serious about Stop the Violence. Because it was hundreds of people.
Hundreds of people.
Hundreds of people out marching around at FedEx Field.
I got the phone. I got the gloves.
Including Jennifer. Look at all these people.
I needed proof, right? Because it was cold.
I'm a witness.
And I said, you know what? I'm gonna get the iPad. Left the gloves. I was too cold to run back to the car. I was like, I'm gonna put my hands in my pocket and I'm gonna take pictures with one hand and keep warming up. But it was so beautiful, Holly.
I was trifling. But let me say this. I support the people.
That's right. And there goes a Major Goodoff and Juanika Fisher from Denny Tavala, our source, from Denny Tavala's office, County Council Member, Denny Tavala.
Uh-huh. Y'all look good.
Yeah, it was just a wonderful day.
I'm just glad it's people like you in the world that can advocate for me. Because I was at home in the bed with the rest of the folk.
We saw people walking to the rally. But look, I'm one of those, I sat in the car until five minutes till the rally. That's why I read. That's why I left my gloves.
But you was there.
But Holly, what was most moving to me. And I hope I have one of the pictures that was most moving was about every 25, you know, percent of the, so every quarter, of the loop that we walked, the mile that we walked, we kneeled and prayed. And Holly, that was probably the most moving thing. Bobby Henry prayed. I mean, Senator Muse prayed. It was just beautiful, beautiful. Beautiful Reverend Weaver prayed. I mean, man, you do great. Pastor Anthony Macklin. It was so beautiful. And so, my day was jumping from walking in the cold, getting into the forum, going to First Baptist Church of Glen Arden. Shout out to WHR, Pastor Jenkins, and the family at First Baptist for their amazing day with Hezekiah Walker there. And then, I trekked to Montgomery County to participate in the Table of Brotherhood. James Subba Chu hosted along with Keith. Just a round table of brilliance to talk about how we can promote more unity and continue working together with all of the media. So, that was one big advocacy moment. And the other big advocacy moment, Holly, that I just wanna give a highlight again this week on is the stuff that's going on in Flint, Michigan. Now, everyone knows I was quite upset about the matter of Flint, Michigan. I don't know if we're able to pull up that video. It's up at the top of the run of the show. If you can get it on mic. But in Flint, Michigan, heartbroken 100,000 residents were exposed to lead by them switching the water source to the river that everyone should have known was contaminated and to mistreat the water in the water treatment facility. Because you can filter, purify, and osmosis out these impurities. But that was not done. And people have been drinking this brown water. And so, we've progressed from making it known that the people were trying to raise money to give away water before the holidays. I've been working with Pastor Sanders and some of the faith community there, as well as the legislative community, boots on the ground. And we're gonna be doing much to leverage this teachable moment about the importance of voting, the importance of being legislatively involved, the importance of advocacy. Because it was truly the media and advocates who would not let this story die. And Rachel Maddow gets a huge shout out. So, today, Holly, where we're at is the governor has, in his State of the State message, talked about how sorry he is and how he's gonna fix this problem. And you know, I try to have a big heart. Usually, I have a big heart. But in this instance, Holly, my heart is not feeling so big. It would be the most honorable thing that you could do is put into place provisions to make sure that the people who've been poisoned and the young people have access to whatever care resources they need as a consequence of this happening. And then resign. That would be the honorable thing to do. But honestly.
No, just resign.
Yeah, but I'm saying, honestly, you just need to resign because it's not about, it's not like you found out there was lead in the water and you reacted and said, oh, my God, we did something. Let us do something. You lied, covered it up, told people to relax, told the people that there was nothing going on for months and months and months and months.
It's worse than that. It's worse than even that.
Yes.
It's worse than that. He did all of that.
Come on with it. Come on with it, Holly. Come on with it.
But what I realize, but what I, as, we have folks in Michigan. So, we've been on the phone with them for the last two days, working with them. And it's worse than you think. Because actually, he is in fact the cause of this.
Exactly.
What happened is, as we talked about at least once on this show, I believe. For, just like Detroit, before Detroit even, Flint has been in bankruptcy for years.
For years.
And it's something like $22 billion, okay? So, they've been under state receivership, which means the state has been managing them.
Exactly.
And so, in an effort to try to reduce debt, they made a strategic decision to change the source of where the water was coming from. From the original source that was a reservoir source, right?
Yes.
To the river.
Yes.
But the problem with doing it to the rivers, all the things you said, it didn't have.
It did, that the filtering, the testing, and the treatment. And that was the point. The reservoir was used so. Because it was a clean source.
And then, what made it worse was he put in place, because they've been under this receivership, these emergency managers who contemplated and implemented this plan. Knowing.
Knowing.
They actually have memos, have full knowledge.
Full knowledge.
That there was lead in the water and that there were other damaging chemicals. And you have to really see the impact that this has had on the kids, the children in Flint.
It's an intergenerational, Holly.
To truly appreciate how horrific this is. So, the Coalition for Clean Water has been formed. That is the official group that if you want to lend your support to this and participate. #FlintWater. You can find them at aclumich.org or flintwaterstudy.org or waterfightingfor, waterufightingfor, it's a play on words, dot com. But here are the four things that they're asking for. To replace all public water infrastructure at no cost to residents or businesses. To refund all water bills since switching to Flint River and to create a fund to repair property damaged caused by toxic water. Now, you have to understand, they didn't just give this water to people. They charged people for this water. And even today, they are still paying for this water. Number three.
You know I'm trying to hold my peace.
Independent state and federal investigation. Lift executive immunity from governor's office and release all communications. And the reason that's key is because they've already had witnesses testify to the fact that the emergency managers knew about this and still moved forward with the plan. Creation of a Flint Citizens Civilian Corps to train workers to repair the infrastructure, which I love. Let the citizens, as they have a ridiculously high unemployment rate in Flint, this is about to be jobs to fix this, train them, and let them be a part of the solution. And then, five, and this gets to what I was saying about the babies. Creation of a holistic medical care facility in Flint to offer dilation therapy and other methods to treat lead poisoning. That's the way you treat lead poisoning, dilation therapy. And so, I mention this because, you know, I have, I feel a sense of audacity that this man is now standing up as if he has done something magnanimous when, bitch, you the cause.
Well, I, let's take it further. High crimes and misdemeanor. When I'm saying. High crimes and misdemeanor, I, when I'm saying.
You done just.
You need to fund this so that you could say, I did wrong, but I tried to right my wrong. Go, eh, but really, he needs to be brought up on criminal charges along with those other officials, because they knowingly. Made a decision to poison people. We're not talking about water where you could say there was a little bit of feces in sewage, but there's Legionnaires' disease. Running amok, an eighty-four percent increase in Legionnaires' disease. That's body chills, fever, flu-like symptoms, vomiting, nausea, in addition to the poisoning.
And let me tell you something, you wonder why the black people were mad, Flint is, uh, over sixty percent African-American.
Yes.
So we're talking about literally the government killing us. Um, so I don't, you know, I don't think it's possible to be too dramatic about this. It is absolutely horrific. Um, and then, eh, eh, but I will say, you know, give, give President Obama a little bit of credit. He did declare Flint as a state of emergency. And what that means is that it will enable the federal government and the Office of Emergency Management Services. To immediately act and to get clean water to, uh, the citizens of Flint. Um, but it is not the prosecutorial stuff. It is just to manage the current situation.
Exactly.
But listen, we didn't have to get, we did not have to go down like this. This did not have to be this way.
No.
And the fact that we continue to find ourselves, I mean, we talked about what happened in Birmingham, we've seen this happen in DC.
Exactly.
Uh, I mean, this is, this, this keeps happening over and over and over again. It's not an accident, folks.
Proportions for me, like, you know, all of the things that we've talked about with the Tuskegee Experiment. All of the people, I remember sitting in an ethics class, my second year of graduate school, and listened to an ethics professor tell me how, well, there's no evidence. That the Tuskegee, uh, uh, incident really, experiment was real and true. So you're gonna do wrong, cover it up, tell lies. And, and, um, I think I talked about, uh, on Facebook or Twitter, how, uh, the young woman who started giving free tests to the children, a pediatrician. Started giving free tests to the children and found very high lead levels. And then to have the health officer come on national television or international television in a twenty-four news cycle. And say that, uh, there were only forty-three cases, when anyone in healthcare knows that it is not a transient. The lead doesn't stay in your body, it gets into your bloodstream, into your interstitial spaces, does its damage. That is genetic and lasting and it is excreted from your body. So you still have remnants in the little kids that you need to clean out and for people who have it to clean the lead out of their system. But it's not gonna stay there, like you put in ten milliliters i- injected in and it's staying in the system, it's gonna go away. So how dare you test people four months after you stopped poisoning them and suggest that there's no damage, only forty-three people out of a hundred thousand? So I want them to go to jail. I'm sorry, you knew you were wrong, you did it. And I'm signing on with Bernie, with Hillary. I was so pleased to, at the forum that the mayor had, uh, with Hillary Clinton, um, to just yesterday, to talk about, um, the work that she's gonna do. To ensure that the protections, the funding, everything is in place. So that was my big thing, that since we were talking about legislative advocacy, this is a time when for all of the people, especially African-Americans. Who some of us in our cush lives have been looking at the Black Lives Matter youth and scoffing at them and looking at this person and saying, well, you know, if you weren't committing a crime, the police wouldn't kill you. This is just what you need to see. It's not just about race, but this is an American tragedy. This is the worst poisoning, the worst thing that's ever been done in the United States of America, so.
All right, we're gonna take a breath, rant over for the moment.
No, 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 the clock is fast, remember, we got a little time.
But I'm just saying, three minutes, I know, we gotta take y'all.
Else that you wanna share?
Well, I'm looking outside, it's starting to snow, so that's disturbing me, this weather is about to be crazy.
I'm going home, it's like, ooh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, Friday weekend. Yeah, I was gonna say, that's what I was telling you, get out, but they said there would be snow showers tonight and then it's gonna, but it's not gonna stick. And then tomorrow, is it sticking? It's sticking, wow.
Yeah.
Holly, you might need to, uh, alright, which if you wanna drive, alright with you.
Driving though twenty hours, no, I'm not doing it.
But you have a beautiful automobile.
It's true. I did wanna make one more, uh, brief political statement and then we're gonna be out. Um, and that is, um, I call this, uh, the No Effect Endorsement.
Yes.
Sarah Palin endorses Donald Trump. For what?
I was walking on the treadmill last night, listening to her.
Like, I think this is about how she's gonna be pubbing her next reality show, so.
Was it two Corinthians? Was that what he said, or two Colossians? Two, what did he say? Two Corinthians? That's how much you go to church, Donald, second Corinthians.
Yeah, how about no?
Kids know that.
How about it's a no?
Yeah, Sarah Palin, it was comical to watch her, Holly, because she was there, you know, amping up the crowd. And I'm just like, okay, um, Democrats, this, do we doing this thing? Don't believe the hype, so I'm gonna be shameless, cause Holly, by profession, needs to remain neutral. I'm gonna be shameless. Bernie, I love you, you have some wonderful ideas and we're gonna work on you. And I know what the pub people are saying, the polls say, in New Hampshire, I'm convinced Donald Trump and the Koch brothers have paid some people for that too. But this is Hillary's, uh, she's not entitled, she's qualified, ready, and this is her season and the women are gonna bring it to you, Bernie. I love you, love your heart, but Hillary Clinton will be the Democratic nominee, because Jennifer's gonna be in the streets.
Okay, well, let me tell you, whoever it is, they're not gonna get anywhere unless they pay attention to what black women want.
Say it one more time, Holly, one more time.
Whoever Jennifer and the rest of the black women is for is probably what it's gonna be, because that's kinda what it's looking like. However, here's what I will say.
Platform.
We're gonna see what happens in South Carolina.
That's why, that, South Carolina, and that's why we're all going to the National Coalition for Black Civic Participation Conference. Here in the DMV in DC, March seventeen through nineteen, because we are gonna be educated, empowered, ready with our data and numbers. On fire to register people to vote.
Yes.
And we gonna get it done.
That's it, and that's the word. So, join us next week.
Black Women's Agenda.
Join us next week, same time, same place. Um, I'm gonna have, um, a friend of the show, Jeanine Clark on.
Yes.
She has started a new series, uh, Men and the Business of Divorce. So men, are you in a rocky relationship? You need to check us out, cause she's gonna give you all the tips that the women already know. We'll see you next week, the Renee Allen and Friends Show up next.
Thank you, Holly, I'm so glad you made it in the station. I was like, come on, Holly, I need you. Thank you, have a blessed week.